I didn't hear from him.
Welcome to our meeting. The date is February 11, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. At this time, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Here.
Councilmember Stelk will be absent. Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak will be absent. Councilmember Lanfair. And Mayor Steele.
Here.
Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator, chief financial officer, Matthew Gleason, the finance director, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, and Keith Kurz, the public works director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. Council members, do you wish to remove any item from tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, we shall continue. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking.
Thank you, Mayor. Gerald Poole's 8A. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing with our consent agenda, a motion is in order to approve the consent agenda, items 6A through 6K. Mr. Lanfair.
I move we approve the consent agenda, items A through K.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I will second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Proceeding with our public hearings, 7A. Public hearing request from Venue Works of Grand Island LLC doing business as Venue Works of Grand Island LLC, 700 East Dolly Park Road for a Class I liquor license. Mrs. Grenier.
An application for a Class I liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on January 22, 2025. A notice to the general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on February 1, 2025. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on January 23, 2025, along with Chapter 4 City Code alcoholic beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code and recommendation is approval upon final inspection. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Mrs. Grenier. A motion is in order. Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2025-49.
Mr. Brown.
I second that motion, Mayor.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Public hearing 7B. Public hearing on acquisition of permanent easements for Independence Avenue, Capitol Avenue to Manchester Road, project number 2023-P-10, Schonig, Schleichart, Langer, Mann, Milner, Bryant, Ross, and Grand Island Family Church Incorporated. Mr. Kurtz, please present.
Good evening. Tonight we have acquisition of some permanent easements required to build the Independence Avenue project. As you can see, there's various property owners here. We're acquiring some permanent easements, mostly for small acquisitions for storm sewer or there is a couple that involve a sidewalk. So I believe this is most of the easements that are required for this project.
Public hearing is now open for this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak on it? If not, public hearing is now closed.
A motion, counsel? Mr. Lanfair.
I move we approve res- uh, item 2025-50.
Mr. O'Neil.
I second that we approve 2025-50.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 8A approving the grand, approving the Good Life District Master Plan as presented by Confluence. And before we have a presenter, I'm going to turn to Mrs. Fisk to address some procedure.
Members of council, due to the weather, the consultant who was originally intended to present in person and handle your questions couldn't make it here. City Administrator McAlune and Assistant City Administrator Brown are going to facilitate that presentation. The consultant from Confluence is going to be watching on television to be able to anticipate or address any questions you might have. Of course, there's about a minute delay for her to do so. So I'd ask that you make a motion to suspend your ordinary procedures to allow each of you to ask those questions you may have of that consultant prior to a motion being made, so that way they can get addressed in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Mr. Sheard, do you have that motion?
I do. I move to suspend ordinary procedures and allow for council questions prior to an emotion.
Mrs. Mendoza.
Can I second that?
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Oh, we're missing one.
Got it. Motion adopted.
Mrs. McAlune, please present.
Thank you, Mayor. So council, Caitlin Bolte from Confluence, as Ms. Fisk explained, was unable to join us in person. But what she did is she did her presentation using her PowerPoint and that she had already prepared and is going to, Pat's going to play that video for you. I think we'll probably be able to answer a lot of your questions if you have questions. But as Carrie explained, we have Caitlin available via text after she hears your questions. If you would ask the mayor to be recognized and also turn on your light, Pat will know to pause the video so that Caitlin can hear the question. And then she'll be able to send me the answer and we will limp through this together and get it done despite the weather. So Pat, if you want to go ahead and start the video.
Hi, everyone. Sorry I can't be there this evening, but recorded this for you, a presentation as if I were in person. So let's go ahead and get started. Name's Caitlin Bolte. I'm with Confluence. I'm a landscape architect and principal in our Omaha office. We are assisting with the master plan for the Good Life District and are also doing the park-wide system master plan for Parks and Rec. Agenda I want to cover today is going over the initial plan components from Woodsonia and talking a little bit about the context of the site that we're talking about for the master plan. Talk through the process that we did over a short couple months and then do an overview of the actual master plan with you. So let's dive in. When we first got involved, Sonia has been hard at work coming up with a master plan for the Good Life District on this area. The site that we're looking at here is outlined solid in red. The Good Life District is bigger than this, but the specific area that we're master planning is the boundary that is outlined in red. Some things to note here is that it is mostly outside of the city limits and abuts it in most locations. Is one area that overlaps at the bottom left-hand corner here, if you can kind of see my cursor. Other couple things to note is the proximity to the Grand Island Senior High School, just on the south side of Capitol Avenue, and then Northwest High School, which is a little bit further away and has a little bit more distance to it to get across the highway. But the main purpose of the Good Life District, attract new industries, more jobs, obtain tourists and college graduates from around the state, and generate that economic activity. There's funding mechanisms and performance measures that are required as a result of this Good Life District, and those are there for your viewing pleasure. When we look at what the master plan that Woodsonia put together and that you have seen before, these are kind of the components that as a design team we needed to understand its required grant and what we needed to meet. So kind of starting in these different zones here highlighted on the map, low medium density is shown in yellow, and that includes standalone duplex and fourplexes, but around 250 units in this kind of yellow space on the western side of the district. BM high density is illustrated in this brown color, and that's 1,500 multifamily units. There will be some support commercial, 20 acres of support commercial, and then the big items here, the added outdoor complex and indoor complex, which is highlighted in green. So the indoor complex is a smaller green box. Is a space preserved for an elementary school, and there is a space preserved that in this dark blue, or lake and detention ties to the existing Eagle Scout Lake, and that is required to elevate the property so that we can make it portable and all the floodplain types of things. And speaking of floodplain, you can see this 100-year floodplain is rooted in this kind of faint dash blue line here. So much of this park is in the floodplain. The floodway is actually even further down here, and you'll see that on a few more things. Really not focused on anything south of the railroad tracks, so just kind of it is showing up in some of these graphics, but that is really not something that we focused on from a master planning standpoint. One of the first things that we did was start to think about site context and how people get to this site and how can people access the site. So looking at the site access in terms of circulation, is hard to get to. The site is hard to get to. It is separated by a couple different roadways and limited access off of US 281 heading north. So if you're coming out of town for a tournament, future indoor rec complex items, you would likely use US 281 and come up and around and into the site somehow. If you're more local traffic, you're probably using Capitol Avenue or Broadwell Avenue to get up into the Veterans Park Complex. Those are the two major components for access. There are some smaller access points off of Webb Road that goes through kind of some rural, single-family housing. And the other thing to note is just when you look at all of these images on the screenshots that we took from Google Street View, it is very road-focused or road-oriented. Capitol Avenue is the only one that has a pedestrian connection to this. So again, not only from a vehicular access is this harder to get to, it is also very difficult to get to it as a pedestrian, just based on the current road network that gets you there. Another component is the railroad and its proximity to this development. It will play a significant role with the noise, and that's just something we want to be mindful of as we're master planning this space. We do, did provide kind of what type of reduction in noise that you can get if landform or walls, a 12-foot landform or wall is your best way to reduce that noise from the railroad tracks, in addition to just sheer distance of placement of buildings from those railroad tracks. The other thing that we just talked a little bit about and just trying to better understand is the future growth of Grand Island. Area directly east of Broadwell is egg for additional industrial land uses that would, it's already pretty heavily used with traffic today, accessing it off of Roberts Street and direct access off of Broadwell. There's really only internal roads to access the buildings within that. So that's something that we need to be mindful of as we're planning for this master plan and the future overpasses that may happen alongside of, as the railroad BNSF wants to remove at-grade, at-grade road crossings. So that relationship is going to be really important for us to consider. Okay, let's talk a little bit about the process. As I mentioned, Confluence is working on the Xinrec Master Plan. Throughout that, we've done a series of community engagement, outreach efforts. You can see, we did a public open house. We did, offered that also online, the activities that were offered at the public open house last June, we did that online. And then we did individual stakeholder meetings. So really, you know, over 500 people provided input on this Parks and Rec Master Plan. And the key themes that came out of that that are relevant to this particular space or the Good Life District is this additional indoor facility, whether that's inclusive of community spaces for community rooms, additional courts for pickleball, basketball, tennis, and also that kind of pool aspect, an indoor pool. So this was a really opportune time to study and kind of blend in with this Good Life District and identify, well, how could we incorporate those items as a part of the Good Life District since we're hearing that from the community? And some secondary items are highlighted in the lighter green. I think the big ones I want to just point out is trail connectivity is super important to the citizens of Grand Island, and we know that that's a challenge for a lot of the reasons that I just mentioned on the previous slides of access and railroad proximity. So being able to provide that within the Good Life District will be really important to set that space up for success long-term. So we got kicked off November of last year, did a two-day workshop where we were in Grand Island, and we came up with some ideas, listened to the group, and presented it to them on the next day. We did talk to individual department heads during New Year in January, and then we did meet with a few council members that were willing to sign up or have the time to sign up and give a little bit more in-depth on this plan. And we are here today on February 11th, giving a review of this master plan to you. So what came out of that workshop, let's talk a little bit about that. There's a lot of conversation about transformational is not the same as transactional, you know, concern or sensitivity to the fact that this is a really unique opportunity for Grand Island, and let's do it right. Want it to make sense fiscally, and we also want it to make sense from a quality life standpoint and serve our community members based on the things that we know that is a priority to them. So that's, that's kind of the big takeaway from the workshop, setting that up for success, making sure that this can evolve over time and continue to get, and that sets up, the only way that you can do that is ensuring that it's got good bones to start with and a good kind of layout to start with. Just a couple other things that we heard from that workshop that are relevant here. Circulation was really important to talk about, the truck traffic, not wanting to allow trucks to come through this district, keep them east of Broadwell, and Roberts Street was not desired to connect directly into the Good Life District as a result. We also explored some future connections of that truck traffic on how it continues to flow out. So that can shake out a couple different ways, whether it goes all the way north, maybe it comes to a new intersection here at the property line, north of the industrial kind of property here, tying into a new intersection that would be north of a future potential overpass as shown in red here. Or maybe it could even go south and connect into Capitol, which is what this view is kind of showing, looking west. There is a round bow included, which we included these photos here, that does count for bike and pedestrian, as well as just circulating cars and trucks, so that this is a walkable district and people feel comfortable walking to this district. And then we did talk a little bit about pedestrian bridge, long-term of that. Some other things that we learned at the workshop that this Good Life District, if there's something that's an identifying feature to leverage tourism, such like the Bloom Festival, like at Washington DC, that's a really big idea, but the idea is you could leverage that for people coming there each year for a certain event. Housing density was welcomed, and then the intent is to grade the whole site at once and install that primary roadway infrastructure and utility infrastructure to make it housing-ready for future development. So. These were the two options that we presented next day after we listened to the feedback from the workshop members. Ultimately, we went with option A, and I won't dwell on these because this really does inform the future master plan, which we'll talk about here in just a second. But this is the overall illustrated master plan for the Good Life District. Want to just highlight really quickly, we'll break down each individual component, but just compare it back to the original Woodsonia plan. Zoom into this just a little bit more so you can see this. So as we think about the different components, this master plan, it's 4.67 acres of commercial space. The Woodsonia plan had 20. Now, one thing to note here is we are showing mixed use in a couple different locations of 31, nearly 32 acres. By the time that you add these two up, we are in, you know, above that 20-acre commercial component. So I think there's a lot of flexibility in how that shakes out. The multifamily units, Sonia plan had originally planned for approximately 1,500. This is showing just under 1,400 units comparable. And I will say again, this mixed-use acreage can also include housing. So I think that that's achievable to meet the original tent of the Woodsonia plan. The lake acres are same, the school acres is comparable, 14 acres was originally shown, but we are showing 10.77. And then single-family units, we're showing more than what the Woodsonia plan had showed at 291 versus 250, and that's broken out into four different lot sizes, which you can see here. Not, are showing a dedicated trail loop around this master plan. So I'm going to zoom back out here so we can just take a look and dive into each one of these components individually. So overall, circulation-wise, people would access the site is either off 281 or Broadwell as indicated in these kind of black asterisks. These are the primary ways into the site, and this is what I would call a spine boulevard that everything can be accessed off of. Are still maintaining the existing access point right south of Eagle Scout Lake, but we are proposing to remove the two access points that go into the parking lot today, just to clean that up. And you would then be able to access that parking lot off of the main spine road from a couple different locations here. Centerline of the boulevard is aligned with the property line. It is on the industrial side here and the ag use to the north for a future potential roadway that could connect and that circulation more whole. Other things that you're starting to see as you go north of this creational kind of component is these, the smaller local roadway network. And this is really important when we think about walkability in a Good Life District or in any district in that matter. But because this is such an isolated area of town, we want to make sure that when people live here, that they can walk around and feel like they can walk to the store, feel like they can walk down to the lake, feel like they can walk over to the field. And the way that you do that is to provide street connectivity with sidewalks on each side, and the easiest way to do that is the, the street grid system. So you start to see that in this western portion here, as well as in this eastern side of the main spine district. So this is kind of the commercial district over here, and this is that single-family house over in this location. Another small connector piece we're showing down here is off of Webb Road. It's a way to access into the space. The other couple things to note is pedestrian connection. So in blue are highlighting just the pedestrian connection. So we will have a, a land bridge, excuse me, a pedestrian bridge that connects the park today to the future kind of townhomes and retail to the north. Will complete the, I know, trail loop, which will be really nice. And then we are showing a future pedestrian connection over the railroad tracks, help give close proximity to the high school long-term. You know, kids could walk over here and be right in the thick of all of the athletic stuff. So it makes a lot of sense to continue to push for that pedestrian connection over the railroad tracks. This is almost a mile long across here, so having another pedestrian connection about a half mile, that makes, makes good sense. We look at the railroad buffer. We have, I mentioned earlier in the presentation, you know, we want to be mindful of, of the development that's right up against it and being able to buffer the noise. And two different ways to handle the railroad buffer is through, through either that 12-foot wall or 12-foot berm. Obviously, a 12-foot berm takes up a lot more land. This bottom option is showing versus a 12-foot sound wall here. So just something to be mindful of as, as we continue to evolve this development. Either is fine, just kind of depends on how this all shakes out. And you can see right now, what we're showing is about 200 feet is the building that's closest to the center of the roadway line here. So like I said, different ways to handle mitigating some of that sound. We look at the attention and grading, this is the feature throughout the entire district. This is kind of centered, all the developments centered around this component, and it is created because we need to elevate the site. Be important to maintain ADA access to different features along here. We are showing some fishing piers of the lake. There's that pedestrian bridge connecting the, the two bodies of water. Are showing an amphitheater on the, on the lake in close proximity to two hotels. And then there is kind of a boathouse by the existing kind of boat launch and kayak launch space here for more access and water access to the lake. We just want to be mindful of how to do this right and do this well. So we do make some notes on keeping that lake edge soft, you know, not a hard three-to-one slope down. We want it to look a lot like what's out there today, which is what this photo is showing on the, on the left here. And over time, you know, it'd be great to have some native landscape, native plants that might be exposed when the water's low or maybe the beach is exposed when the water's low. And then when, when the water's high, those plants are just inundated with, with, well, spine road is intended to have a land, land bridge, which is what this bottom photo is showing. Something that's big enough to allow kayaks to move through to either side. Having that visual connectivity of the water from one pond to the other pond will really help with recreational use of this facility and making it feel a lot bigger than it is today. The last thing I want to just note is that this alignment or this design will require fiber relocation. There is a large fiber line or important fiber line that is right south of Eagle Scout Lake, and that, that needs to be relocated probably along Broadwell and then north along 281 as this lake gets developed. And next component that I want to talk about is the indoor/outdoor recreation complex. So this brown square here is indicating the new indoor rec facility. That would include four to eight pickleball courts, 12 to 16 volleyball courts, basketball courts. And the outdoor space is this artificial turf that would have four soccer fields and four softball, baseball fields, artificial turf. There's 1,200 parking stalls around this building to support this use. It's super important. You can, you can see that we are showing green islands, we are showing pedestrian connections, we are accounting for, you know, walkways in parking lots so that it's easy to navigate when you get out of your car and you're trying to get to the front door. We do think that this is a good use right up against the railroad tracks. Other thing I wanted to note is the proximity here, being just really close to the park opponents today, and is also kind of a visual terminus. Turn off 281 and you're coming down the spine road, you're going to be able to see this building. It's easy wayfinding, easy to find when you're an out-of-town guest coming, either Broadwell or 281. So I think there's a lot of benefit to having it kind of at this, at this location. As we think about the civic opponents, like the fieldhouse and the community center, we are showing those again, really in close proximity to the work today that's there today. It would be top of the existing soccer fields that are being used today. So the, the new soccer fields would need to be relocated, and we are showing those in the floodway. the floodway, is a good use of that land. And then the fieldhouse is, as I mentioned earlier, 120,000 square feet, includes a 300-foot track with the artificial turf on the inside, and that's what that dash line is kind of showing as of a soccer field. That community center slash aquatics is again, includes diving well, 300 to 500 spectator seating. It's similar size to what the YMCA is today and has additional community entities like classrooms and things like that. The size of the soccer field that we're showing today is two acres larger than what is there currently, so 14 acres for the natural lawn soccer fields. And it is, does have central restrooms and concessions between all of the fields. These are just base holders for field layout right now, just as an example of what you could fit there, but they could be striped any which way, depending on what kind of tournament's being used and what's what type of practice needs to use that space. There is this kind of white hatched area that is being served or saved for future overpass construction, drainage, et cetera, that may need to be used when that overpass gets built at some time. Commercial and mixed use and hotel located along the spine road. Vehicular pad sites are located along 281, so those are these, you know, you can envision a gas station right here and maybe a restaurant pad site, Olive Garden or something, you know, kind of right off of the highway, easy vehicular access. But as you move south into this space, intention is that this is becomes kind of a mixed use district with perhaps maybe one of these is townhomes and another one has retail component, and maybe there's a small office building that exists and has on-street parking down this mains main district road and even on the crossroads here. So at the terminus of that, are showing kind of two restaurant pad sites that have a plaza that overlook the the water. Again, just trying to create that walkable district for all of the different housing that's up here. Get really a truly walkable community and district that people want to come and stay. Across the lake is two hotel facilities, three-story kind of tail buildings, and then a commercial mixed use component where maybe you get your nails done or something that's going to support this indoor rec facility that's really close proximity to the hotel, probably a restaurant with a patio outside of it. That's what we're kind of envisioning for this area to be really helping to serve this indoor facility. Again, all of this is connected through trails. You can see a really small kind of sidewalk lines illustrated throughout this entire plan so that people can walk around and get to these different district spaces. Multifamily units, these are based on some of the floor plans that Woodsonia shared with us and really proof of concept of how we could get some of those multifamily units to exist. So we do have some that are blanking either side of the pond here, and then we do have friend kind of floor plan that's more maybe townhome focused in this location. And another smaller pod up in here to help buffer some of that single family housing to the south. Single family is along the west side. You can see that this is being buffered by a park right south of there. Are exceeding the amount that was shown in the original Woodsonia Plan, 291 lots, and that's achieved by the different lot sizes. This can really be adjusted based on market demand though. So the cool thing here is that the roadways get built to promote a walkable neighborhood and a walkable neighborhood that connects in with the rest of the district. And whatever happens within each one of those blocks can be driven by market demand. There that needs to be more small lots or more larger lots, a lot of flexibility in that there. And then the last thing is the school. School is located right off of the spine, really close proximity to the single family homes and on the multifamily locations for consideration. So that is the plan, and we'll be around for questions.
Mr. Nickerson.
And is Kaitlyn with us still? Some of these can be answered through the staff, but is Kaitlyn still on with us too or not?
She is listening via G I T V.
Okay.
I can read her answer via text.
Okay, and these questions may or may not be for Kaitlyn. And Kaitlyn, I know that you and I and Mark had a good 75-minute conversation here several weeks ago. One that I told her, wow, we only need about 30 minutes. Guess what? 75 minutes later, we were still, we were still talking. She's done an excellent job. She did an excellent job that day going over some details, and she knows this stuff inside and out. So any questions we may have, she's going to be able to pinpoint it very quickly, and I appreciated her time and her her professionalism and and everything that she's done. So some of these questions are going to be the same ones that I asked her, that she may or may not have known at the time, but tonight, we've got all the right people, I think, that can answer those questions. First of all, I want to start with, I want to start with the recreational building that we're thinking of putting out there, because we've talked about aquatics. And I don't know if she touched on that much today. If she did, I I missed it. But one of the things that's been very important to our community is an aquatic center. And I'm only going to tell you what I heard. I don't know this for sure. This is my interpretation, and this is where I can get clarification from those that have been involved in this in more detail. What I heard was that the plan was maybe just to take the existing YMCA with their swimming pool and just move it out there, some facsimile of that. So we have another pool. So I don't know what happens to the old Y. But the idea is if that's the case, and I asked Kaitlyn this, and of course, she wouldn't have known that answer, I don't think. We gain nothing if we just simply move one swimming pool from downtown Grand Island out to the center. So I'm hoping that we're thinking bigger than that, than one swimming pool, and that this aquatic center will be part of the the plan that the community needs, because this is the time that we'd want to do that. So I don't know if anybody has any input on that tonight about the aquatics component of this and was part of the thought process, because part of her just her presentation talked about the partnership with the Y schools, the park and rec for the indoor rec facility. So what do we know about those plans? I know we're still at 30,000 feet, but what do we know about that?
So we're very much so still at 30,000, 40, 50,000 feet. But the YMCA has expressed interest in partnering with the city if the city, if and when the city builds an indoor aquatic center at it within the Good Life District. In terms of what the YMCA would do with their existing facility, that that is not really anything that we've discussed. The city owns the land and the Y owns the building, I believe, under the original construction plans for that. So we've already partnered with them on that building, so that would be another partnership discussion. But really, the idea of locating the indoor aquatic center and fieldhouse area out there is we know that the fieldhouse is heavily used. That type of use came up in the park's master planning process, the feedback that she showed you, and that that was an amenity that was highly desired. This location for the Good Life District, for all of its accessibility concerns, is actually quite centrally located to the three to four of the high schools, closer than the one downtown. So the high schools have expressed interest in being able to use that space too. So these are all very high-level discussions, really just expressions of interest by potential future partners.
Okay. I just don't want us to lose the aquatics component, because this is a time that may be ideal for us to factor all that in. And one swimming pool is not going to do it for this town, just won't work, I don't think. The other thing that was on the presentation that I didn't pay attention to last time, I don't think, was that when we were talking about the, and I think this is the main sports complex, there were itemized things, or it could be four to eight pickleball courts, eight to 16 volleyball courts. What does the four to eight mean or the eight to 16? Is it going to be, we got to figure out if we want eight or if we want 16, or what's the what's that range all about?
And and that is kind of the details that we are currently working on with Woodsonia for their Good Life District application. So they've submitted an application. We're in the process of reviewing it with them and going over questions about it. But they haven't narrowed down and defined a specific number of each type of court. They're not at that level of detail yet in terms of planning.
Okay, I would just tell you, as a new pickleball player and getting acquainted with that group, more pickleball courts are surely favored in this town. And I'm, I don't know about the volleyball component. I don't know that that would be the same. It may very well be, but I will tell you, pickleball players need a place to play. And they, the hundreds of those that are probably in this town, would be advocates to see eight pickleball courts versus four. And again, that's all can be decided as we go.
And and just councilman, the 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 volleyball courts and basketball courts, that actually, and the pickleball, but also the volleyball and and specifically the volleyball and basketball are sports that are recommended by the sports, the competitive sports organizations that facilitate the tournaments. So that's the reason, keep in mind that this indoor sports facility is supposed to be a regional competitive, drawing tourists to Grand Island. And so that's why the high number of volleyball, basketball courts is to facilitate those large regional tournaments.
Yeah, and I think we'll see the same in pickleball, because there's a huge following there. The other thing I would want to bring out again and point out that I know Kaitlyn talked about that Roberts, those of you that don't go out past that railroad track very often may or may not realize that McCain Foods alone, at least when I was there for 20 years, employed around 400 people. That doesn't count the cold storage facility, that doesn't count the other little little places that are around there. So I'm, looks like Jerry said he's having trouble hearing. I'm not sure if our volume's good or, okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, those of you that haven't been out there, there is 400, it used to be at least 400 employees, which means you've got shifts, two to three shifts going. So hopefully, we keep that in mind as well with the planning of the roads and whether the overpass is going to, how that affects all that, I don't know, but that's long term as well. But you do have a lot of traffic that's out there. I think now it's seven days a week for that factory. So we want to keep that in mind. The other observation that I would make is that as we look at housing development here, I think the speed of that development is going to be dictated by the price point of those houses. Because as I even look at where we're at today with the price of housing, we have some homes that are not selling, that have been on the market sometimes two to three years that are brand new construction because of the price point. So all that's got to be factored in. These homes are going to be pretty pricey, there's no question about it, but that will be part of the plan as we go. The railroad buffer is huge. I'm glad that that's been discussed, because one of the questions I had as I was looking at that wrapping this up with Kaitlyn a couple of months ago was, I just realized the question I would have is who wants to live close to the railroad track down on the south, on that south side? Who wants to do that? And she said, that's a very valid concern, and she addressed that tonight as well. My final question, which we may or may not want to talk about tonight, would be when the master plan is approved, what is the best build-out strategy for that to meet especially our primary requirement of increasing the number of outside visitors to the Grand Island area? Is there, is this too premature to even talk about? Or what would a reasonable strategy be to help accomplish that? Because that sports complex seems to be an anchor in this entire process.
So I'll answer that question with the reiteration that Woodsonia has submitted an application to use Good Life District tax revenue to start building out this project. And we're in the process of vetting that. It will come to city council. You will be tomorrow, weather permitting, tomorrow, the CRA will have its first meeting to discuss their, Woodsonia's application for the TIF incentives within the bound, within this project. And then the plan is that that ultimately would stay on track to come to city council on March 4th for your consideration. We would also, at that time, bring kind of a preliminary recommendation on their Good Life District application. Again, we're the kind of the details that you've asked about, how many courts, how big should the the indoor aquatic center fieldhouse be, things like that. This master plan just shows that physically you can do the layout of a building that's sized appropriately to fit those uses. So Woodsonia has done the feasibility studies as part of their application for a Good Life District. They've put that into their application for incentives from the city of Grand Island. And then on the aquatic center side, Kaitlyn reminded me that this just shows the space for the aquatic center and community center. The feasibility study and actual detailed design still needs to happen. So you will be seeing Woodsonia's applications in the near future. And then from those decision points, we'll continue to move forward with planning on them and mapping out how this could be implemented and constructed.
Okay, well, those are my questions. Again, Kaitlyn, thank you for your presentation tonight. The detail and your expertise is wonderful. And obviously, I'm going to say obviously, obviously, in my mind, this is a very wonderful looking project, you know, as it can be developed in the phases we need, and will meet a lot of needs that we have in our community as we continue to grow in the sports arena as well as people. We need the homes. And the whole walkability concept here is is very unique and it very, it's almost a community within a community, and it'll be a wonderful opportunity for us. So again, I thank you for all for the presentation tonight.
And Mayor, sorry, just one more comment from Kaitlyn in terms of the housing. The single family lot size that is 70 by 135, there are three, 33 of those shown on the plan today, is the size that is very common in Grand Island today, but from an affordability standpoint, they are showing many smaller lot options to help with affordability.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I think when we first talked about Confluence coming to do this work, I was somewhat critical or I had concerns that we didn't have enough involvement at that time, as well as not having enough community involvement. I attended the planning session with Confluence in November, and it was fantastic. I was so impressed with the way they ran it, with the amount of public input they had, the voices included to help get to this plan. Mitch, to some of the things you asked about, they had folks from YMCA there, they had folks from the soccer community, from the softball community, youth sports, traveling sports. The city was represented, business leaders, Grow Grand Island was there. Tons of voices that were invested in this were were heard profusely. We talked a lot about the size of soccer fields, for example, and the importance of that. I learned a lot about travel volleyball and what you want to see when you come into a town and all those things. A lot of details were shared. They didn't just listen, they actually took the input, turned around overnight and came back with a couple of plans that incorporated proving that they were listening to our community. I was very impressed. I was, I was happy to be involved with it. This is a strong plan. It's, I'm excited for the transformation that this plan would put together for Grand Island, not just on the north side of Grand Island, but all of Grand Island. I hope this actually comes to be. To a couple of your questions, we did talk a lot about that traffic at McCain. When we talked about that overpass and some of that, we talked about housing and how this will help actually with some of the the needs that came out of the housing study that we heard a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks back now. The diversity of housing, the opportunities for parks and and living, it's just a, to me, this is the plan that I was, I think a lot of, when we talked about a Good Life District, this is the plan we were asking for. It took a little bit of time to get to see it like this, but I'm excited for it. I want to thank Kaitlyn and her team for their flexibility and the and the amount of work they put into getting this. So I don't really have any questions since she's not here. I just wanted to make sure that people know how much community input actually went into this to make it happen. So, thank you.
Sheriff Poles, did you want to speak on this item?
Thank you, Kaitlyn, mayor and councilman.
Hold on. Just, I, my question concerns on the comprehensive, on the comprehensive plan from a couple of weeks ago, there is on page 255, something like that. They talk about controlling population density. And what I've found online, whatever, is as of 2020, the population density in Grand Island was 1765 per square mile. And you're talking about approximately 3,000 units. And the average household size is 2.6. So, you know, that's 4,000. That's a lot of people. They're very close to the sports complex. Who's going to be using the sports complex? I mean, is this going to be all clubs or what? I mean, it just seems, you know, when we were kids, the empty lot was when all the kids hung out. And so I'm concerned about this, this much housing in this space with one gymnasium, basically. And then we have to worry about what's going on south of town with the last, with the proposal that was presented to the county commission as far as a sports complex on the Highway 281 down near Bostrom. So has that been considered, these two complexes? Are they going to be competing? I know that there's a lot of clubbing going around, volleyball and basketball kids. I know that there's a lot of space, but when every town is, is building one of these complexes, what, aren't we kind of diluting the, the mix? So anyway, on with a couple of other questions. So we got, again, this is, this is where we can talk all these generalities about this is a great thing for Grand Island. But again, we know TIF is coming. So what is the projected number? Do we have anybody that has crunched some numbers of the students from this project that will be attending our public schools? Now, we've talked, we showed, okay, I'll go on. The school, there's a school proposed. What is the expected cost of the building, of staffing it? Where will that money come from if this is a consider, if this is a TIF project? It's not going to be coming from the, from that Good Life District. So what's the outlook on that? Do we have, have we crunched numbers on where that money, where's my, where's my property taxes going to go, you know, in the, in the coming five, next 10 years? Okay. The comprehensive plan indicates that the plan should be used to prevent overcrowding. But when you're packing 4,000 people into less than a square mile, I, I would consider that overcrowding. I mean, I'm a rural kid, okay? Maybe all came from the big city. Big city people might think it's nothing, but to me it's, it's an issue. And okay, now what are the anticipated traffic patterns? I know you've touched on it a little bit, but with this school right off of this spine road, you're going to have people dropping kids off, picking them up. And of course, what happens again about that same time is people going to work. So is that really, is that traffic pattern really, has it really been looked at? Have we figured out? Have we crunched vehicles per day at this particular hour? I haven't heard any numbers. So I'm, I'm really concerned that this is, oh, it's just wonderful that nobody is really, it's kind of like who's going to put the bell on the cat? If you remember that old story. It's very much like that.
So Mr. Poles?
Yes?
So on the school, so the reason the land was set aside of 10 acres or little, just about 11 acres for an elementary school was that was based on the input from Grand Island Public Schools as to how, what they would need in terms of another elementary school with this number of units and, and with the traffic, the pedestrian flow and the accessibility. So placing a school within the neighborhood on that side of the tracks. And, but it isn't, we are, this, that's up to the school district of whether they would build it. This is just a plan, right? It's a, it's a vision. And it would be up to the school district to actually design and cost out the construction and how they would pay for doing that. But this is, the plan sets aside space for that to happen. Same as what I mentioned with the fieldhouse or an aquatic center. And then on, in terms of your traffic questions, those are things that would have to happen as development progresses. There would be traffic impact studies that would be required for the circulation of, of traffic in and out of the site.
Okay. But the school district really, really avoids any sub, any talk of the TIF projects because they don't really want to get involved. So their input on this issue is probably very, very minimum. It's still a concern. It's still a concern. Who's going to build this school? Where's that money going to come from?
Yeah, understood.
That's my concern. That's my concern. So, uh, okay. So then we had, this gets into TIF and stuff. But the voters rejected the, last November, they rejected the vouchers for private and pro-kill schools. They really rejected, what they were rejecting was using public money for private enterprises. And yet we use that. That's the principle that operates TIF. So at some point, shouldn't we really have a little more conscience as far as using TIF money, spending public money on private, for private profit? It's, it's really sad. And I got maybe one more. So I guess that was the end. And I just, this was my emotional appeal, that we should have everybody believing the U.S. Constitution is a government of the people, by the people and for the people. But right now, we've got a government that is run by corporations and it really, really needs to be curtailed. Thank you very much.
Anything else for Caitlin Boltie since she may be still with us? I don't know.
She is.
Okay. Then we have a motion, Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve resolution 2025-51.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, mayor. I second that motion.
Any discussion? Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, mayor. I think this project and this master plan, you know, it meets all of the transformational needs that the state of Nebraska has put out in their statutory stuff that allows for these kind of projects to move forward and that allows for cities like Grand Island to participate in, in these programs for these transformational needs. And this project is an opportunity that is once in a hundred years for Grand Island. And so as we move forward, you know, and I'm obviously motioning to support this, I think this is a great idea. And I think it's going to fast pace the, the development of this property faster than it ever would have been developed without the money. Without the money, it would probably still be sitting there 75 years from now. And so this, what it does is it gives us an opportunity to take the Good Life District funds that the state is giving us and lets us fast-track development. And the fast-track development of needed housing, needed apartments, needed, you know, facility that'll do, be transformational, which is in, in the sports, the competitive sports arena. So for those reasons, I support it.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 8B approving economic development program LB 840 grant for video production to Brookshire Company. Mrs. Burley?
Thank you, mayor. Mary Burley, representing the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation, presenting to you Berkshire Company's docu-series, My Town's LB 840 application this evening. My Town just completed its first season of its documentary series focusing on bucking the negative stereotypes of living and working in rural America. They focus on the strengths in rural communities to attract new businesses, new families and new investments into that community. Now, in 2022, I stood before you with my fellow committee members of the railside business improvement district, economic vitality, and we asked you for, to invest in railside festoon lights. These light bulbs, we told you, we wanted them to be draped across Third Street and we told you that they were going to increase the social, social and emotional connection to the Grand Island community. We told you that it would drive tourism activities. We told you that it would drive, just drive a love for our community. And I'm happy to report that we weren't wrong in that. Since 2022, there's been marriage proposals under these lights. There's been prom photos and teenagers are picky about their photos. There's been family photos. There's been girls' nights. There's been guys' nights. And there's been wrestling underneath those railside lights. In 2023, Grand Island Northwest hosted Friday Night Lights Wrestling Match. Sailor Screen Printing is an entrepreneurial startup on the corner of Third and Pine Street. Sailor Screen Printing assisted with the event. They posted a simple photo, a short brag on Grand Island and hit post on their social media sites. Now, by the time my algorithm showed me the social media content, it wasn't from Sailor Screen Printing, but rather it was from the Michigan Youth Wrestling News and Events by the time it got to me. And this Michigan Youth Wrestling, they said, man, wouldn't we be cool? Wouldn't we would love something like this? Grand Island, the event hosted Grand Island to come to Michigan. And this post has 1,200 reactions, 153 comments and 304 shares. Alternatively, Sailor Screen Printing's original post, it only had 61 reactions, four comments, five shares. This, I tell you this story because I want to tell the story about the spider web of influence that can happen with social media. Sometimes we're really good and sometimes we get lucky. The, the quick snapshot that Sailor Screen Printing took here on your left, it doesn't hold a candle to the beautiful photo that Creklo Films took and posts and shares of those railside lights. Now, we know that organic marketing and organic trending information is great, is a great cheap way to reach internal and external audiences. But so too are influencers and personalities to help spread our message. American influencers have brought awareness to people in places that had a negative or untrue stereotypes, significantly drove economic growth and highlighted hidden gems across the country. I just threw out two very popular influent, three rather, popular influencers. Micros Discovery Channel's Dirty Jobs series highlights essential and not-so-glamorous jobs. Not only does he highlight and change the narrative associated with these essential jobs, but he also talks about the educational path and the wages with those essential jobs. American Pickers is another good one. They travel across the country and they look at and dig through people's stuff. What we might think is junk, they find hidden treasures. And then guys, Diners Drives and Dives, he, he goes across the country looking for the best greasy spoon to eat. Now influencers have shaped consumer purchasing decisions. And according to an August 14, 2024 Forbes Magazine article titled, "How Influencers Can Drive Consumer Purchasing Pattern, Behavior," 71% of consumers trust influencer content. Their followers hold them in a different high, a higher esteem and they're perceived to be authorities of that niche market. The fear of missing out, or FOMO, is what we call it, comes into play and drives those consumer trends, whether it's travel, consumer purchases or anything like that. And we actually have our own success story of this. I met with a, a young, young professional today. She calls Texas home, but came to Grand Island for a job opportunity. However, she did not accept the job opportunity until she had checked out every social media account attached to Grand Island. We call this individual and her significant other dinkwads. Dual income, single, dual income, no kids with a dog. Dinkwads. These two dinkwads have now placed roots in Grand Island. And Grand Island has the opportunity to have an influencer in Cory Hepola's My Town series. Season one of My Town launched in October of 2024, so it's a brand-new series featuring communities in Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin, North Dakota and not Nebraska. Within two months of that rollout, My Town had 1 million impressions on all platforms, 270,000 views, 65, 60, 56 rather, 5,600 total hours watched and streamed in 36 states and six countries. Grand Island was selected for season two of My Town with filming starting in the summer of 2025. Grand Island is the only Nebraska community selected for season two. We are among Fairmont, Minnesota, St. Joseph, Minnesota, Lynton, North Dakota, Waterford City, Waterford City, North Dakota, Chamberlain, South Dakota, Waterton, South Dakota and Rock Valley, Iowa. Again, only community in the state of Nebraska. And we're hoping that this works, but this is what Cory Hepola, the influencer with My Town, has to say about Grand Island.
It's Nebraska's favorite island. Wait, Nebraska has an island? Yes, Grand Island, Nebraska. Here's why we selected Grand Island, Nebraska for season two of My Town. Now, depending on your perspective, Grand Island may or may not be seen as a small town because Grand Island is actually one of the larger towns in the state of Nebraska. However, from the outside, all of Nebraska would be perceived as rural. I look at Grand Island and it's growing because of the people. And this community has a rural mindset with agriculture driving the town's growth. Grand Island feeds the world and they make things for the world. In the summer, people from all over Nebraska and the surrounding states come to Grand Island, Nebraska. And not only to visit, people from all over are choosing to raise their families here in Grand Island because of all these opportunities that are here. They're choosing the rural lifestyle here, the schools, the businesses, the opportunity for a better life. There's a reason Grand Island, Nebraska continues to grow and I can't wait to see why.
So that was Cory Hepola produced a quick reel about why Grand Island was chosen for season two. Now, we're requesting $40,000 in LB 840 to produce this 20-minute to 26-minute production. The pre-production is, or rather, the proposed distribution schedule is split out into two, two distribution channels. The first would be $19,000 for pre-production. This includes a four-person crew traveling from Minnesota, on-location time, field production, equipment, accommodations, et cetera, while in Grand Island. And then post-production of 21,000. This includes the production, the edit and the name likeness and image of Cory Hepola, as well as an embedded link onto Grand Island Television. Now, in full transparency, once the LB 840 application is approved and we wrap up production, we as a community have to continue to promote our community through this video, through our messaging. Our work never ends and it's all hands on deck. Again, if you remember the Sailor Printing post, their post reached national markets not because of their own, their network, but because of their network shared and blasted it across the world. It's very similar to a gym membership. You can't pay your gym membership, never show up for a workout and magically get skinny. We can't just talk about how great Grand Island is a, a community internally. We have to tell the rest of the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burley. Council members, is there a motion regarding 2025-52? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we approve resolution 2025-52.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Nickerson?
Yes, Mary? I'll let you get a drink. I think I'm suffering some from the same thing tonight, so. So this is all nice and pretty and exciting and all of that good stuff, but what, what ultimately do you expect to result from somebody promoting Grand Island for 20 to 26 minutes? And I mean, what do we really get out of it? What, do you have any information about what other communities that have been exposaged has received from this? Nice to be recognized and if I'm looking at this, hey, that's pretty cool, but then what? I mean, I, it's, it's, just watching this little trailer was exciting about Grand Island, but that's good, little snippet of information, but what am I supposed to do? but that's good, little snippet of information, but what am I supposed to do with that as a person, other than say, hey, Grand Island sounds like a cool place?
That's, that's the whole point. Grand Island sounds like a cool place. So, the purpose of this video is not to be in the hands of you and I that call Grand Island home today, while there is power of that because we, we grow, we gain and we grow our, our connection to the community, but it's really about connecting with those outside of the city of Grand Island so they now know, and they've been influenced. Gosh, Grand Island is, is a hopping place. I need to check that out. It needs to become a bucket list, and maybe it's a good place for me to grow my business, grow my family, and grow my network.
Trying to get a hook into somebody, say, come check out our community. Okay, alrighty.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 8C, approving an Economic Development Program LB-840 grant in the amount of $500,000 to YWCA of Grand Island for the development of an expanded child development center located at 315 Wyandotte. Mrs. Burley?
Yeah, Mayor. Tonight, this evening, I'm presenting an LB-840 application for the YWCA's expansion project. Now, the YWCA is not only expanding their physical footprint and their campus, but also their employee base and, uh, and their childcare availability. Sometimes we get in a mindset where if we don't directly have a child birthed to five years old, or we don't have a grandchild within that time period of life, daycare becomes not my problem. The reality of that is if we're an employer, if we're an employee, if we're a consumer in the community, it quickly becomes a workforce issue. And when our workforce doesn't have access to that attainable, affordable daycare, then our businesses suffer in the very much long run. We Care For Kids is a statewide partnership coordinated by the Buffett Early Learning Childhood Institute at the University of Nebraska at Lincoln. In 2023, We Care For Kids connect, conducted a statewide survey and revealed that 31% of all respondents, well, of parents with children five and under said that they left the workforce because they couldn't find affordable childcare. Thirty-four percent of those respondents of parent, with, of parents with children five and under said that they refused a job opportunity, a promotion, or a change because it would increase their childcare expenses. I'm just going to highlight really quickly, um, the Nebraska childcare crisis is costing Nebraska millions of lost revenue. If you think of productivity in our own businesses and the lack of productivity that happens when you're either concerned about your child not having a safe, adequate place to go, or you have to miss work because you don't have that childcare installed. And then quickly, 74% of these survey participants say the lack of childcare and early learning options is making it hard for Nebraska businesses to grow new employee, is to hire, rather, businesses to hire new employees and grow. The new LB-840 program that was approved in November of 2023 does expand, um, the eligible activities in the program to include grants, loans, and funds for early childhood infrastructure and development. This is the first time that we, we would be able to utilize, um, this as an eligible activity to assist the YWCA in their expansion. The YWCA is currently located at 211 East Foner Park Road, but had the opportunity to purchase the former Grand Island Public Schools, former Wyandotte Learning Center, also, um, former Starr Elementary. When Grand Island Public Schools realigned their property assets, YWCA was able to capitalize on that opportunity. Now, this is a former existing high school career pathways and a former elementary school, and while the bones are really good of this former school structure, it does need extensive rehabilitation to bring the building into a 21st century early childcare and learning standard. Again, YWCA will not only expand their physical footprint, but they'll, it will also expand, uh, their full-time equivalent employees. Today, they have 32. With this expansion, it allows them to increase by 20 to 52 total employees. They currently serve 130 children through their child, childcare and after-school program. With this expansion of their physical footprint and their full-time equivalent employees, they will expand to be able to serve 300 children through their childcare and after-school program. We are recommending, um, the approval of $500,000 in LB-840 to support the YWCA in two, in a distribution schedule, um, that reflects $250,000 for the reimbursement of their acquisition price of the former Wyandotte Learning Center, and then $250,000 for the complete roof replacement, including tear off of the existing roof. This just assists and supports an overall renovation project of about $6.5 million that YWCA will take on, um, through private donations and businesses, capital campaign. And with that, we would request the YWCA's LB-840, approval of YWCA's LB-840 application. I do have Amy Bennett here with me, um, if it's appropriate, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Certainly. Rules require that you state your name.
Oh, good evening. My name is Amy Bennett. I'm the Executive Director of YWCA Grand Island. Thank you all for considering this. One of the things I just want to point out and reiterate is what Mary said in terms of our childcare crisis. In July of 2023, one of our largest centers announced that they were closing Cathedral Daycare, and we lost 200 childcare spots. Since that day, we have continued to lose childcare spots. We are about 1,600 spots short in the city of Grand Island in numbers of childcare spaces in the number of children who need childcare. Statewide across Nebraska, um, we actually were one of the states that had the highest percentage, percentage of all parents in the home in the workforce. Two years ago, that number was at about 87% of all available parents in a home working in the state of Nebraska. A year later, because of the childcare crisis, that number's at about 76%. We have formed a coalition with many, many partners, including The Chamber, um, other businesses to take a look at childcare, and what we're hearing is we need more childcare access. We know our large businesses have looked at this. The cost of building is expensive, the cost of maintaining, and running a childcare center is not, um, it's not really the best for-profit model. And so, really nonprofits are the ones who are stepping into, um, the fray and saying, we can do this work. And so, we're just asking that you help us. When you're talking about all of this housing, that's great. People also have to have a place to have their kids taken care of in a high-quality spot as well. So, any questions that you have, we'd love to answer. I also just want to point out, what you saw, um, is the outside design for the childcare portion. Um, we also will be moving our offices as well and our other programming, um, into this building, but about 80% of this work is going to be the childcare center. In addition to that, um, we are using the two modulars on the property. We had one point considered selling those and selling off part of the property, but we are using those two modulars, and our goal is actually to have them open in April of this year, um, to start, um, expanding after-school programming. So, if we are able to get those licensed and opened in April, come the summer, when school's out in May, we'll be able to add about 25 more school-age spots just for the summer than what we have right now. So, we're already looking at ways that we can, um, increase that childcare opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Sh, Mr. Sheard, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move that we pass Resolution 8C, 2025-53.
Mrs. Mendoza?
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Nickerson?
Yeah, Amy, I'll start with you, I guess. And first of all, I just want to tell you that I appreciate people who have vision, that can take existing buildings and have a vision to do something successful with them, whether it's a, an armory that becomes an epic building, or we have an old veterans' home that's now being transformed into a wonderful purpose of, of letting people live there again. And we now look at a s, former school where 32 years ago, my kids went to school there when it was still Starr. So, I remember those days. It's just great to see people have that vision and, and to look beyond what that building is today. So, thank you for that and those that are supporting you in this. Of the half a million dollars being requested tonight on a six and a half million dollar project, how is the rest of the funding coming along? I mean, do you feel comfortable with, with the project overall?
I do feel comfortable with the project overall. One of the things that this will allow us to do is really be that first domino to drop. One of the things, we have funders in Omaha Sherwood Foundation, Scott Family Foundation, have already committed to funding us, but what they have said to us is we will only give you what your community gives you. So, this will be a starting off point for us to be able to say, the city of Grand Island is investing $500,000 in this project. So, um, funders outside of Grand Island, and then also businesses in Grand Island. So, you all will be able to set us up for success. We, we really do feel very confident. We know that the need is there. We have lots of support around this project, so I'm, I feel good about it. I just need you guys to knock that first domino down for us.
Sounds like a great opportunity for all of us. Do you have a timeline that you're up against, or are you open-ended on that, or how's that?
Well, we have a timeline. A lot of it obviously goes along with how, um, how the fundraising goes and the pledges, but the sooner we can get into the building, the better. Um, so our goal would be to go out to bid in May of this year, um, and then my architects are saying that'll probably be 12 to 18 months after that. So, we are looking at being able to move, um, by summer, hopefully, um, um, into fall of 2026. We will not be stopping our current services until we, we are able to get over there. So, there will be no stoppage of services, um, and we will then also be looking to sell our current facility at Foner Park Road, um, as well.
I think as Mary told us in her presentation, that a lot of us don't think about the need for childcare if we're not involved in it anymore. I remember my wife and I worked opposite shifts to try to keep those kids, you know, some kind of care while we were there. So, I know people fight with that every day, and this is something that's very important to us. I'm also grateful for the opportunity, this being the first opportunity, to use 840 funds for childcare. That's, this is going to be good for our community as well. So, I think it's a worthy project. Again, I appreciate the vision of you and your, your, uh, executive committees and your board and everybody that's, that sees a great opportunity in this building, and I look forward to seeing the finished product.
Mr. Lanfair?
I was really glad to see this project. Like Mitch said, we struggled, my wife and I, with childcare long, long ago, but, uh, some time ago, my wife and I had a chance to tour the facility and see your operation. And quite frankly, you are top quality. You can't get any better than these people and the care they give. But also in an economic consideration, childcare is important to the economics of this town. It would be an asset, a true asset for the community. So, I'm going to be pleased to vote yes.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 8D approving First Amendment to Economic Development Agreement LB-840 with Zabuni Specialty Coffee. Mrs. Burley?
Actually, let's let her give her voice a rest, and I'll present it. Um, so before you tonight, um, is an amendment that would amend the 2019 Zabuni Specialty Coffee Economic Development Agreement for LB-840 funds. The owners of Zabuni presented to you about a month ago about their desire to, um, the fact that they've had to close their business, and so they've sought an amendment that would reduce the term of the original agreement by eliminating the availability of incentives and benchmarks for later years within the agreement. If council approves this amendment, Zabuni's distributions and benchmarks will be limited to those that were successfully completed prior to the pandemic. If amended, this contract will then be closed as fully performed. No additional payments, collections, um, or, or collections will be required if this amendment is approved. The remaining funds of $51,666.66 previously restricted in Fund 238 for purposes of this agreement would be released and made available for future, um, economic development spending. So, staff's recommendation and the recommendation of the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation is the approval of this amendment.
Is there a motion? Mr. O'Neill?
I move that we approve Resolution 8D, 2025-54.
Mr. Hossi?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Our last agenda item is 9A, Executive Session to Discuss Strategy for Negotiations Regarding City-Owned Real Estate and Associated Terms. Council members, is there a motion? Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we move to Executive Session.
Mrs. Mendoza?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
You're adjourning to Executive Session at 8:24 PM.